Hi, everyone. Welcome to work session for Tuesday, February 16th, 2021. Please stand.
The United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we join, we have recently got a request for our mayor to come down and join us. And so we're going to start off with Mayor David, Mayor.
David.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Councilwoman Freidman?
Present.
Councilwoman Riley?
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Present.
Councilwoman Trump?
Present.
Councilwoman Drong?
Present.
Councilwoman Gamble?
Present.
And President Rasanelli?
Present.
That's all seven here.
Thank you. And now we will look in. Mayor David.
All right, thank you, President Rasanelli. Good evening, members of City Council. I hope you're able to hear me. Council President Rasanelli, I appreciate you accommodating my request to come down this evening to give members of City Council an update on the budget and the city's finances. I will try to cruise through this. I'm supposed to attend one of our police collaborative meetings at 6:30. So I appreciate you letting me go first. The most of this information, there are all this information really is public with regards to kind of the state and federal government, but I wanted to come down and try to give you some updates in real time based on my conversations as president of the Conference of Mayors, a member of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, who's talked directly with the New York State Budget Director, Robert Mihica, the New York State Controller, Tom DiNapoli, on just exactly where things stand right now. So the three primary areas that I want to talk about tonight are sales tax, state aid, and the federal stimulus bill or package that's currently being crafted by President Biden in the Congress right now. You'll recall that when we put the 2021 budget together and when I made that presentation last fall, we did not know where things were going to land with regard to those three areas: sales tax, state aid, and federal stimulus money. Some of those question marks have been answered. There are still some question marks, but we have enough information to allow us to move forward and make some informed decisions based on information that was not available to us in the fall. So I'd like to start with sales tax for the year 2020. You'll recall that we were very concerned that Governor Cuomo shutting down the local and state economy was going to have a drastic impact with regards to how much sales tax we were going to collect, especially considering bars and restaurants are among the highest sales tax producers in New York State. And at the time, those were shuttered and were takeout only, and even now only have have capacity restrictions on them. So I think most of you will recall that the city's top three sources of funding in this order are property taxes, sales tax, and state aid. So sales tax is the second largest revenue provider for the city of Binghamton. In the 2020 budget, we budgeted $12 million even for the year 2020. The first quarter came in up, the second quarter came in down, the third quarter came in up, and the fourth quarter came in up. So what that means is we actually came in above our budget projections for the year 2020 in sales tax by an amount of $294,000. So we budgeted $12 million for the year 2020, and we collected $12,294,000 in sales tax. Now, according to the controller, he attributes most of that to the internet sales tax that the legislature passed several years ago because people were still spending money. It's just it is being collected from different sources. So obviously, it was not from the bars and restaurants that were shuttered, but people were on Amazon and Google and a host of other retail outlets that were generating sales tax, ordering their groceries, etc. So that's really good news. We, mayors across the nation, you know, expected millions of dollars worth of losses on that. So that is positive budget news for the year 2021. We kept that amount flat in our budget, so we budgeted $12 million again for the year 2021. We won't know what the first quarter return is for over a month from now. So when we get that information, you know, we'll pass that along. So that's positive news on sales tax. So that's one of the three pillars that I want to talk to you about. So the second pillar is state aid. And state aid, as I mentioned, is the third highest source of revenue. So Governor Cuomo had indicated that he was going to cut or withhold 20% of aid from hospitals, school districts, and localities for the year, for our calendar year 2020. You know that the state's on a different fiscal year than the city, but that's how it impacts the city of Binghamton. In Governor Cuomo's budget address last month in January, he indicated he was going to reduce that 20% withholding to 5%. So that's positive news, but that's still a 5% cut. So a 5% cut in our state aid is $462,000 because our state aid is about $9.5 million approximately. So $12 million is our sales tax, our state aid is around $9.5 million. So a 4% or a 5% cut is $462,000. All right, so that's for the year 2020. Now we're in the year 2021, and in that same governor's budget address, he announced that he was going to continue to make additional cuts in state aid in a range from 2.5% to 20%, depending on a municipality's reliance on state aid. So the state provided a list of all the municipalities. So we know that the state, for Binghamton, the state is cutting 2.5% in the year 2021. So that's $231,000, right? At 5%, it was $462,000, half of that is 2.5% at $231,000. So you have the 5% withholding for 2020, you have the 2.5% withholding for 2021, you add those two together. That's what the state of New York is going to withhold for the city of Binghamton for those, for our two calendar years. Now, the state has also said that if and when the state gets all or most of their stimulus money from the federal government, they will return that money to us. Right? So that 15% that I told you they were returning to us for the year 2020, that's going to come to us by March 31st of this year at the latest, which is, which is the end of the state's fiscal year. So while they've already withheld that 20%, they're giving 15% of that back to us by March 31st of this year. They're going to keep the 5%, and then when the budget is passed, assuming the legislature doesn't step in by April 1st, they will continue to hold 2.5%. So that's what we're looking at for state aid. It's not super great news, but it's better than 20%. Villages in general, villages across the state, all got a 20% cut. Every village in the state of New York, 20% cut on their state aid. And, you know, the larger cities range anywhere from 2.5% to 5, 10, 15, and 20%, depending, you know, on a formula. But that's, that's what's happened for Binghamton. So the third pillar that I want to talk to you about is the federal stimulus package. And, and this is happening in real time. It's on TV, it's in the newspapers, so many of you may be following this on your own. But the House has already passed or reviewed their portion of the stimulus bill. And in that, it includes $350 billion for states and local governments. So it still has to be reviewed by the Senate and passed by President Biden. It is my speculation that the Senate will reduce that $350 billion number more, but the fact that there is money in there is a positive sign. Binghamton is going to get some amount of money, we just don't know exactly what it is yet. But the things that we are advocating for, it's not good enough just that the $350 billion is in there. We have to make sure that there's no population caps. And what that means is, the last time the states and cities received money, they only went to municipalities with populations over 500,000. So in the state of New York, that's only one city, and that's New York City. Right? So, and that was in the first round of coronavirus funding that President Trump passed in March of 2020. So it's, it's important, not just that there is money included, but there's no population caps, that the smallest village in the nation to the largest city, that every municipality gets funding, that's what we're fighting for. Also, that the money gets distributed directly to municipalities like Binghamton and doesn't go to the states, because the states are trying to advocate this money, for this money as well, our portion of it, so that they can distribute it any way that they want. That is problematic, so we're advocating for it to go to, directly to the municipalities as well. And also something, remember this phrase, it's called maintenance of effort, and that's the actual phrase. And what that means is, it means that if Binghamton receives X amount of money from the federal government, it means that the state of New York can't reduce our state aid by the same amount, meaning that we get a net gain of zero and the state ends up taking, you know, that portion of the money. So the House has done its portion right now, it's in, it's in the hands of the Senate, all indications right now, these from the White House, Intergovernmental Affairs Office, is they're pushing to have this approved in two months because they want those stimulus checks out by two months as well. So those are the three areas. And the reason I'm coming down and wanted to talk to you about this now is because it ties in just to everything that's going on with regards to the budget. And I'm submitting to you tonight an RL that asks to take some of our positions that are in contingency out of contingency. And you'll recall that when you were reviewing the budget, we talked to you about what the timelines were for the fire department and the police department with regards to when the police academy starts. Police academy starts at the end of March, and the fire academy, you know, we have a little bit more flexibility because we have the option of either doing it ourselves at the training facility or sending to a straight, to a state facility. But those are coming, we're at the point right now where we have to start making those decisions. So I will be submitting an RL, we gave it to Lee Rogers, and we're asking to fill all of the police department positions, which are eight, all eight of the vacant police department positions, and four of the firefighter positions that are in contingency. And we'd also want to submit a separate RL because we want to apply for the SAFER grant. And I'm not sure that everybody knows what the SAFER grant is, but the city of Binghamton has received the SAFER grant before from the federal government. It's a grant that provides 100% of the funding for firefighters. So you'll recall that we have four fire positions in contingency and four unfunded firefighter positions. So we want to take the four that are in contingency and fill them and apply for a grant to have the federal government pay 100% of the remaining four unfunded firefighter positions for a three-year period. The SAFER grant announcement just came out, I believe, a week or so ago. It is going to be high in fierce competition because many municipalities had to lay off firefighters and police officers and other positions over the, as a result of some of their strategies to get through the pandemic. I think we also have three positions in public works that we'll be advocating for as well, one position, economic development. But all of these positions are included on the RLs, and everything is included and outlined where we want to transfer the money to. I just would want to remind the members of City Council that when we put the budget together in the fall, the reason we left these positions vacant was for financial reasons and no other reasons. We didn't know the answer to some of the question marks in the fall. We do have those answers now, some of those answers now, and a general direction that we think we're going with the federal government. The other thing, just to say to all seven of you, is obviously, you know, filling the police department positions is overlapping our discussions on the police collaborative meeting, which starts in about 12 minutes for me. But I just want to make very clear that filling these positions does not take away any financial resources to any other plan, strategy, idea, position, partnership that we will advance as part of the city's plan. And I want to be very, very clear on that, that I will find the money for and support anything that makes sense, that we agree on, that's part of our plan. So it doesn't have to be one or the other, this shouldn't be viewed as, you know, a limited pot, and if we're, you know, funding positions that we're taking away from something else, because that is absolutely not the case. And I think that's it. The only other thing I wanted to add is, while this is not, we're not asking this to be expedited, so you have the same amount of time that you normally do, you have, you can continue to follow up with us with questions, emails, Chuck, myself, over the course of the next two weeks, if you have questions on this. You will recall that both the CSEA and the firefighters in the fall, or earlier this year, did agree to some concessions to help the city get through the pandemic. And what I told both of those unions at that time is, if we, if the financial position got better, or if we were made whole, that we would, you know, reverse or reverse that or, and make them whole for their sacrifice. So we're not necessarily going to do that at the next meeting, but I did want you to know that that's something that we're going to be coming down over the course of the next, you know, couple of months probably, to make them whole because they were willing to, you know, sacrifice and help us get through the pandemic when we didn't know exactly what our finances were going to be. So I know I kind of was a little bit long-winded, but I wanted to provide you with some very specific information. Like I said, there's, you still have two weeks to, if you want to call me, email me, ask questions about these things, or Chuck, you know, either one is fine. And that's it. President Rasanelli, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come down.
Sure.
You have a couple of minutes if anybody wants to ask questions.
Any questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, this is Councilwoman Riley.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yes, hi, hi there, Mayor David, how are you?
I'm doing well, Councilwoman, how are you?
Good, good. You speak to RLs. I don't, I'm not in receipt of RLs for...
Right, I, I just brought it down and gave it to the clerk, and the clerk will distribute it tonight.
Okay. So then you'll come back if we have questions at our next business meeting?
Well, I would imagine that if you have questions, you would submit them to us before the next, next meeting, because that's, that's two weeks away. So I wouldn't want you to have, you know, unanswered questions or not information when you could ask me questions now, you could ask me questions tomorrow, you could ask me questions for the next two weeks prior to your vote. I don't know that you want two minutes before, or two days before your next business meeting to start asking questions, if you have questions.
Well, I'd like to look at them first, and then I will, of course, reach out, but I don't have them yet, so thank you.
We just brought them down. You'll have the one RL tonight on the positions, and I believe we're, we'll send down the second one, which is the SAFER grant. We're really just preparing it for the fire department, and council has approved those in the past, because it's 100% funding to support the men and women of the fire department. But, and if you have questions on the SAFER grant, I would direct you to Chief Eggleston or Dave Holleran, who is the head of the union. I'd be happy to, if you want to ask us the questions, we can certainly be the middle person and pass those along, but when it comes to the SAFER grant, they, you know, they're the experts on that, we're just helping them with the finances. But the city...
That'd be great.
...for SAFER grant in the past, our last one, we received eight positions in the past, but we just know that the demand is going to be very fierce and competitive, and we know that there's not a lot of money. So we want to get our application in as soon as possible, but...
Okay. Yes, I'm okay with the SAFER grant. I do have a question, though, since we are only guaranteed right now the, the state's support, and we don't know about the federal stimulus and how it will be allocated. If we vote on these positions, and we are not, worst-case scenario, to receive any funding from a stimulus or what have you, we would then have to pull the funds from contingency, correct?
Well, we would be pulling the funds from contingency. I mean, that's where they're coming from.
The RL Angela shows it coming out of contingency into the lines to fill those positions.
Okay. And during our budget discussions, because we had a number of positions in the unfunded and in the contingency fund list, we were going to have another discussion to kind of prioritize that list of positions so that we can rank how they would roll out. Has that now changed?
Well, I'm not sure what, what this, maybe that was the council discussion that you're talking about. I've submitted my, like, I've submitted a list of positions that I, that I want to fund. So I think it's fair to say that these are the administration's priorities, this is the first list of positions that came down. I would also say that it should come as no surprise to anyone that I'm moving to fill the, all the public safety positions. I mean, that's, that's been my, you know, position from day one, you know, I campaigned on that since 2009, that I want to fill these, fill and add a police position. So the only reason we didn't fill those positions as part of the budget had to do with finances. And now the financial picture has improved. And again, as you mentioned, and as I mentioned, there are still some question marks, but obviously, I feel I have enough information to make an informed decision. And what our concern about, you know, the massive revenue losses that we thought might come in the fall, and a significant drain on the fund balance, you know, those, some of those questions have been answered. And it is my belief that the city of Binghamton will, will receive a very large portion of funding, very large.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Rasanelli.
Let's move on. We are moving on to CDAC recommendations, and that would be Mary Ann Callahan. Are you here with us? I'm sorry? Just look, say that again, Lee.
She's locked in.
Mary Ann, can you hear us?
Or maybe Steve Carson, if you're out there.
Is it Steve? Maybe Steve?
Um, I can't, can you hear me?
I, Steve, yes, we can hear you. How are you?
Um, I can't speak for particulars of the CDAC, but I can go over some basic stuff. And there is one thing I do want to put on the record regarding an incident we had, missing one of the applications, if that's okay.
Sure.
Um, so, let's see here, so CDAC made recommendations, I believe, on, let's see here, I think it was February 2nd. You, did you all receive copies of the recommendations they're asking for, that they were saying?
Yeah, I will, I, I did. I hope we did.
Okay.
Yes, I did.
So the basic structure of this, we have two different things here. One is the standard FY46 service programs, and the other thing is the COVID.
Steve, can you hear me a little closer to your phone? We're having a little bit of, it just sounds like you moved away for a minute.
Sorry. Is that better?
It's much better, thank you.
Okay. So we had two things. One is the standard 45, 40, year 46 service programs, which technically started January 1st of this year, and the other one is the COVID recommendations. For both activities, the standard, our sort of standard process is to go to the COC first for ESG recommendations, as well as just basic homeless recommendations. Once the COC makes a recommendation, they present it to CDAC, and then CDAC makes a recommendation based off of that information and public hearings, at least for COVID. This personnel service, the services did not have a separate public hearing excluding the one in the spring of last year. So that's somewhat the basics of the overall process for the system. To that end, though, there was an issue with, one of the agencies had submitted two applications. I have a written response to that. Unfortunately, in the shuffle, they were lost. At least one of their active, their proposals was lost. And to be fair, I don't want them excluded just out, point out blank because of that. So I have a written proposal, or a written response that I'd like to put on the record. Can I, would I send that to whom exactly?
You can send that to the clerk.
Okay. And basically, the general gist of it is that there was a deadline set by the COC for ESG activities for COVID. This agency and several others failed to meet that deadline. We were originally just going to go ahead and make a recommendation anyway, but the COC wanted to do a review and actually do recommendations on it, and in the shuffle, that secondary proposal was lost. CDAC had the information, COC had the information, but it just, by chance, it was overlooked. So I just want to get that on record, that there is that proposal there. Is, Mary Ann, are you on?
Yeah, thank you. Geo, there was something wrong with my microphone, I do apologize. Geo gave me the phone code. So I'm here, guys, please excuse me. I've never been on webinar before, it was a little bit confusing. Steve, you went over the duplication of what we thought was the second COVID submissions? Is that what you've been talking about?
The duplication is more that this, for many of the, for several of the projects, and it wasn't just that one particular, their recommendation was based off of avoiding a duplication of benefits or duplication of services. So that will be inbuilt into the COC recommendations that went on to CDAC.
Okay. And you, you, so basically, you know, I didn't hear what you went through, so are, is there anything else that you want to do, or shall I, shall I pick up from here?
Well, I basically told them the COC process, and I made the note about the COVID thought reform one. So basically, the COC has made recommendations to you and how you guys decided.
Okay. And what I'd like to add regarding the COC recommendations is, the group spent an awful lot of time thinking about what we could do that would be very, very effective and hit the most needed parts of what's happening in the community regarding COVID. So you will see, if you look at the spreadsheet that we recommended, that we, we put in things like vaccination money, daycare money, mortgage assistance money, and residential assistance coordinators. It was pointed out to us that many times people have not been accessing the benefits that they can be because oftentimes the application process is rather complicated. So we suggested that perhaps we could have, you know, people who could go out and help, and they would, we sort of envisioned a traveling help van that could go to specific sites and let people know that they're there to help them with applications. So as you look at the, the other CBPG COVID funding things that we did, please know that what we thought we would, we were doing was recommending things that would augment services that are already being provided. Internet access for school kids was another project that we thought maybe the COVID money could go to. So what we were looking at were ways to make what is out there even better and more accessible to the people that need it the most. So that's basically what we did with the COVID.
Thank you. Is anyone for any questions regarding this?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Hi, Madam President, may I proceed?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. Hi, Mary Ann, thank you for being here. Um, I have some, I guess some specific questions. First of all, I noticed that some, I'm looking at the, the COVID recommendations...
Right.
...sheet right now. I don't think this was in the... Yeah, okay, so I'm looking at the COVID recommendations, and some of the agencies have question marks next to them. What does that mean?
Are, are you looking at, okay, Steve, because I've got the spreadsheet, I don't think I have the same sheet she does.
Sorry, yeah, the question marks were suggested agencies to fill those. We've not, we don't have a contract with them, we've not even really communicated with them. This was simply brought up in the meeting as, if we were going to, say, for example, put money towards food pantries, who would do that? Probably Chow, maybe some other, but it's, it's, it's more of a, we estimate that's probably one of the, the agency or one of the agencies to reach out to.
I see. So money is allocated... I see. So money is allocated in one of two ways. Either an agency would apply for a certain amount of money and be awarded that, and then also the CDAC could designate a certain amount of money to a specific cause, and then later designate an agency to distribute that money. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. But I want to clarify that there was no application for COVID proposals. These were looser, sort of email, back-to-napkin kind of proposals. The reason for this is we don't have a formal process in place on how to get federal grant funding out during a state of a disease. I mean, it's, it's kind of outside our normal realm of things. So we had a public hearing. I sent emails out asking for responses. The COC itself, the continuing care, sent out responses to all of their stake, or questions to all their stakeholders. So we, we did multiple ways of reaching out to the public. Many agencies responded. And so in these issues where you see specific agencies with no question marks, most of those agencies, those are issues where the agency formally responded. The ones that are sort of question marked, or even wrote unknown, we don't know yet who does that. In regards to applying for funding, there is a suggestion from the CDAC here, I believe, if you see nonprofit assistance program under CDBG COVID, that would be an formal application process.
I see. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
And Councilwoman, if I can add to that, what, what I was speaking about directly was the fact that we were looking at something that was very in, I don't want to say informal, but it was loosely formatted. And what we did was, we did some brainstorming. So a lot of times it would go from, well, the school districts might be able to use this, so what program could we do? Or we did the program, and then, as Steve said, suggested possible agencies that might be able to carry that out. So that's what you see is a kind of out-of-the-box thinking to make sure that the COVID funds went to where they were most needed.
Okay. And is there a timeline, maybe, about when those agencies would accept the money and therefore start distributing it?
There is no minimum timeline. There is a cutoff point for some funds. The ESG funds, 20% have to be spent by September of this year. But I think there's something coming down from HUD to extend that deadline out.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And if I may, I had also some questions about the general, the FY46 CDBG funds as well. There were some agencies that applied for funding but gotten, were awarded $0. I was wondering if you could maybe speak to why some agencies were not awarded any money?
Mary Ann's gonna jump on this.
Of course. Yeah, I can do that.
There's been no, there's been no award yet. All this is a recommendation. I just want to clarify that.
Right.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Before I answer your question, Councilwoman, what I would like to say is that the CDAC really appreciates the fact that we now have two ex officio officers from council who are coming to our meetings and are going to be more involved in our processes, and we think that's fantastic. So we thank you very, very much for that. And we want you to know that what we do is, we spend a lot of time looking at the applications that we receive. We go through them rather thoroughly. We look at who is providing the most effective and needed services with the least amount of cost. And we, we try to make sure that everything that we make recommendations for are the best use of the monies that we have. I don't think a lot of people realize this, but we only have about $120,000 for the human services portion of the CDBG for year forty-seven, forty-six, rather. So you see, it's not a lot of money. So we have to be very, very careful how we spend it. And quite honestly, we did exactly that. We looked at the agencies that were most efficient in their service provision, that hit the hardest needing, need of the demographics involved, at the least cost. And we came to unanimous decisions in that process. And nobody got exactly what they asked for, and it is not something that I think agencies should be used, or getting used to, is the fact that if you apply for these funds, it's not a given that you're going to receive the funds. So what we did is, we looked at proven track records. We looked at how the money would be spent, and who the money would be spent on when we made those recommendations. I hope that begins to answer your question.
Yes, thank you for, for answering all my questions. I appreciate it.
I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Riley.
Hi, how are you? We miss you. We miss you.
I know, I know, I know, because they overlap. But it's good to hear from you, Mrs. Callahan. And I just want to give kudos to the entire committee for pushing forward with all of the applications. As you shared, there were live presentations from the agencies where they were able to explain the applications. And the good thing, to my fellow council people, Steve was very willing to help people walk back through the application process. So where there were questions, he did give some guidance. The, the other thing is, I'm excited that the CDAC has put forth their ideas for the community on how to use the COVID money. And, and I kept saying, this is yours. Bring us all your ideas. So I'm glad to see it. My question, though, for us to vote, for example, I do see on the COVID funding, like Councilwoman Friedman said, there are some question marks. If we are to move forward with the proposal, what process will then be put in place to vet and/or support the agencies that are chosen? So for example, Binghamton Schools is a broad agency. What if they aren't able to enter into a contract with us before this funding period?
I can answer that. There's two parts to that. One is that this is no, there's no voting on this. This is just a recommendation, suggestion to the city council and the mayor's office. The mayor, the mayor's office will, will submit a formal final budget, hopefully incorporating some of these recommendations to city council later. I'm not sure when. That being said, because of that, we will be able to hammer out these final details. So for example, if the mayor chooses to say, okay, school children connectivity, I like that a lot, 22,000, you know, mess around with the numbers, but let's go with that. We'll find someone, or an agency, or even the city itself will do it in some sort of manner to accomplish that. So the COVID is really sort of, as, as Mary Ann said, it's sort of a loose kind of, of brainstorming on, on what exactly we want to do with some of these programs. Some we've done before, for example, nonprofit assistance. We've done that in the last round, and there's a recommendation to do it again. Other ones like the food pantries, we kind of, sort of did that in the last one, but now here's a formal process to, or a more formal recommendation directly for food pantry. So there is, it will be hammered out before it actually comes to city council for a final vote.
Okay, that's what I needed clarification on. Thank you.
And, and may I add that, as we did this, one of the things that was really exciting for us was the fact that the way the COVID funding seems to be formatted, and the way Steve was explaining, is that it's a very proactive and, and action-oriented thing that can get done rather quickly, and without a lot of the other things that have to do with funding, especially from the feds. So we're excited about the fact that, you know, we sat together and thought, what could this city really use? So we hope that, you know, those, those recommendations will be seriously considered by the mayor's office.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mary Ann, and thank you, Steve, for joining us.
Thank you. Take care.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Madam President, I see that Steve Carson has another item on the agenda. Perhaps why he's still on the phone, we could just move that forward?
Yes, absolutely. We can do that. Steve, you still there?
Yes, I never get moved ahead. So RL 21-38, the point of this is to address an issue we've had with HUD. During round two, round one of COVID funding, we submitted a proposal to HUD on an activity, which was rental assistance with our ESG funds of about $490,000. We, and it's not just I, and other Jim Holes from the COC, and several of the COC members, were under the understanding that the way we were doing our program would work. But recently, HUD is saying that due to regulatory limits, the way our program is set cannot be done that way. So what that's done is, the agencies are expending ESG funds. It's the rental assistance, which can be done under CDBG. So the purpose of this RL is to essentially fix that error. We're taking the quarter mill, quarter mill of untouched CDB rental assistance, putting it into the contract with Finn, who's already handling the ESG rental assistance program, and switching over everything they've done so far into, and essentially making it CDBG. Now, for those who are curious, the issue that HUD has come up with is that homelessness prevention, which is a big spending, basically someone's in a unit and is unable to pay, and they're about to be evicted, they can access homelessness prevention funds to pay for, to help cover their rents and utilities that keep them in their homes. That's why it's called homelessness prevention. Regular ESG requirements require someone to be in the process of being evicted. Our understanding was, because of the moratorium, we wouldn't have that, and an affidavit from the landlord and renter would suffice. HUD is saying that won't work. So it's unfortunate after the fact that we've submitted about $100,000 that they've told us this. So the good thing is, CDBG does not require the eviction notice. If the moratorium ends tomorrow, which it more doesn't, essentially until May, that may address the issue. And some findings from, some updates to the regulations from the feds at HUD may fix that, too. But right now, the only thing we can do is work with the rules and regulations we have before us. And this is, this RL is basically my way of fixing it. I reached out to Finn and said, please determine how you would distribute those funds amongst your existing budget. And they basically have the $250,000, over $193,000 to be spent directly on clients, leaving approximately 27 for administration costs, plus 23 for the indirect cost for management, stuff like that. So that's what has been put forth to city councils. Anyone have any questions?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman. All right. So thank you for explaining all of that. My question is, so I'm looking back at the, the document that we were just talking about previously, the, the CDAC COVID recommendations. And I see that Family Enrichment Network is listed there with a question mark for $100,000 of rental assistance. Is this the same money, or this is different money from that, the recommendation of the $100,000 from CDAC?
The RL before you now is round one COVID funding that has already been obligated towards CDBG rental assistance. The COVID recommendation is for COVID round two. We may reach out to Finn to see if they can handle that. If they simply cannot, we may look for another agency, or we may try to do this in-house again.
I see. Okay. So this, and I'm just, I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So this $250,000 has already been set aside. So this is not an increase in funding. This is just a reallocation of funding. And then if Family Enrichment Network decides that they can handle it, then they will be allocated, and let's say the, this CDAC recommendations are approved, then they will be allocated an additional $100,000 for a total of $350,000?
Well, there's also the Family Enrichment Rapid Rehousing on the, the CDAC recommendation of $71,000 as well.
Okay, so it'll be approximately $420,000 in total, potentially?
Some total, yeah, you're, you're getting closer to a million dollars here. I would like to point out that this is the main agency we normally use for homelessness prevention. And honestly, when the moratorium ends, both homelessness and prevention and rapid rehousing will become major, major components in the city to prevent homelessness and to get people back into units. We're going to definitely have a housing crunch. And so us having the ability to have these funds ready and allocated and set up with programs that are good to go will definitely offset that. For those not in the know, we've done some rough calculations, and for every $2,000 that goes to a household, that'll cover approximately three months' worth of rent and utilities. So when you see that, you know, even just under financial assistance, $380,000 seems like a lot of money, that's for the existing ESG, that, that's only going to cover 190 households. I mean, it's not going to help a ton. And then fortunately, that's just the way this is. I just want to stress that.
And that, that would be for rent after the moratorium ends, or is that for back rent?
It can do both. The restrictions are, you have to have been affected by COVID. So you have to have lost wages or income due to COVID. And we cover up to three months' worth of rents. Currently, the ESG program's 100%, and since we're switching over our CDBG program, that will also be 100% as well.
Right. Okay, thank you for answering my questions.
Any other questions?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Riley.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Riley.
Thank you. Steve, hi, this is Angela again. Just one more thing. You did mention if Finn is not able to assist or take on the extra tasks that would be associated with this $250,000, we would have to resort to in-house support?
Finn has already accepted the 200, they are, they already said they couldn't, they can do the 250,000. That's why there's actual budget lines, line items broken up. I hope you guys got the budget. I thought I've got.
Yes, it's there. But you did mention something about if they said they couldn't do something, you would have to turn to internal.
For round two, for the round two COVID funding, either ESG or CDBG, if they can't handle it, we may look to someone else like OFB, or the YWCA, or the, sorry, yeah, YWCA or something like that.
Okay. I was just about to ask, do we have other agencies, or do we have the infrastructure to support it in-house? And the answer is, it would be OFB or some other agency, and not the city, per se.
We could. I mean, that's, and that's something, we were going to handle the rental assistance program, but honestly, no one qualified that came through. I understand the moratorium is acting all kinds of weird with things. So once the moratorium ends, this, this will get cranked up to 11, people needing assistance for rent utilities.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right. So now we're going to move back up to RL 21-32. And who do we have? Do we have Pat?
Pat and Paul both here. Can you hear us?
Yep, yep.
Great.
Talk about 21-32.
This is just to accept a donation, baseball and softball equipment from Kitchen for Baseball and Softball. It's a charity that donates equipment to programs that are free of cost and serve underserved areas.
Any questions or comments from anyone? It's expedited, I see. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, so I didn't, we got the donation letter on the second. So quicker we can accept this donation, the quicker we can actually have the equipment mailed here and into the program.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? All right, let's move on to RL 21-41. And this is something that we received not too long ago today.
Right.
So you tell us a little bit about that, Mr. Palmer.
Yes, so this is a pay increase for the Parks Carpenter. The money would become from the same, the same budget line, but comes from an individual.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, Paul, it was, it was from a laborer position.
Right, so so the money is already there. We just want to move it from one line to the other. For an individual who is outstanding and the city should be proud to have somebody of his caliber working for them. So we want to make sure that he stays with us.
Okay. Now, is there anything else that's attached to this? There's an M O U or no that?
Madam President?
Yes.
If I can jump in.
Please.
So what happens in the Teamster contract is they have basically slots for each year where they move up in salary. Right? And what's actually being proposed here is basically skipping one of those slots in order to keep the carpenter. We have a similar provision for mechanics. The city has the option to hire mechanics at the 90% range rather than starting them at the 70% and moving a slot every year because there are certain, you know, professions like mechanics, carpenters that are difficult to fill. So in this case, the Parks Department talked to the carpenter, they, they, they would like to do this. But because we're amending the collective bargaining agreement, we really need a short M O U, and by short, I mean probably two or three sentences, M O U with the union, amending the collective bargaining agreement, providing for this. When Paul and Pat had proposed this, we wanted to try and get that done with the union, but based on everybody's schedules and the holiday yesterday, we don't have that signed yet. We really have to do the, have city council approve the M O U first, and then we can approve the transfer. I understand from the Personnel Director, the Acting Personnel Director, that that's probably going to happen tomorrow, that they will get it signed. Right? I know that the Parks Department would like to move this forward quickly, but it's really something, it's entirely up to city council because it's probably tomorrow that I'll get it and I'll be able to do the resolution.
So does anyone have any questions about that?
Yes.
Given this document kind of, I mean, I understand that things happened and, but it will be kind of a last minute. And I guess the question that I have is, does this sort of throw a wrench in your, in your work, Mr. Palmer, and would this be something that maybe we're better off holding over to, to be, have the opportunity to see this M O U? I don't know. But any other questions or discussion regarding this? I think Councilwoman Riley, was that you? I think that was your voice.
Yes, yes, that was me. So there is a draft M O U somewhere in progress, right?
Yes.
Can we please have that?
I can ask the, the Personnel Director for a copy.
Perfect. And let me also ask, how often does such jump occur?
It, it's, it's rare.
Okay.
You, normally it would be at the date of hire if we couldn't find anyone.
Okay. So we, if we do this, we will not have an overall, an onslaught of a mailbox full of other employees in Parks and Rec saying, you didn't do this for me?
No.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, so thank you.
This is Councilwoman Friedman. I have a question as well.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Friedman.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is, so I, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly, that this is a merit-based pay increase, but it's, it's, how am I trying to phrase this? It's, it's within the framework of a Teamster or a union pay grade?
Yes, this is, they, they work on a scale from year to year. This is basically just moving ahead one step.
I, and that's based on, that's merit-based for the, in this particular case.
And well, it's not only merit-based, but it really has to do with the difficulty of the position. I mean, that's another part of it. I mean, keeping good mechanics, carpenters is difficult to do.
I see. So is this maybe something that would in the future be worked into the regular pay, pay schedule of the Parks Carpenter in order to retain someone like that, or this is just a one-time?
No, this would, this would provide the opportunity for the city and the union to negotiate with the, with carpenters to try to maintain them. It's not specific to this individual. Right now, we're doing it regarding this individual, but I think it would apply to carpenters just like we have it applying to mechanics.
I see. So the negotiation with the unions in the future could result potentially in skipping that one rung of the pay schedule always? I mean, I know we don't know, but that's potentially something that could come out of this?
Yes, just in the same vein that mechanics, we always have the option to hire them at 90% of full pay rather than going through the first two steps.
I see. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
This is Councilwoman Riley again. So that actually is the language that will be included in the M O U that we're asking to review. It's for the entire office for moving forward and not one employee specifically.
It, it's specific to the carpenter position.
Not the one current carpenter, but the position overall in the future.
Carpenter position.
Yes, and that's why, again, I'm asking that we, we see it. So then we know what we're voting in support of. That's, that's all. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Palmer, unless I hear from you that it is something that will be, you know, will really throw a wrench in your, in your work, I would like to hold this over. With that, Pat, I've seen you shaking your head. I'd like, can we have this discussion?
Yeah, we, it would really throw a wrench into our works to lose this person over something like this. He's really invaluable to what we do.
I appreciate that.
Madam President, I have a comment, please. Madam President, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so if we're hearing from Paul and Pat again, it's, um, this is, uh, this is of the utmost importance and it should be done like yesterday. I, I certainly would support expediting this and moving this forward as quick as we can.
I appreciate that. I'm just, you know, I'm just thinking about the late timing of it, like when it came to us today. I've heard, I hear, and I too sense challenges and difficulties to sort of things sort of present. And I just want us to be, you know, mindful. It isn't about slowing anything down. No, that's not what we're here for. And so I just wanted to put it out there, but I'm hearing that this is something really important as all of our work, obviously, so, okay. Let's move on. Anything else regarding?
Sorry, this is Councilwoman Friedman. I just have a clarifying question.
Go ahead.
Um, thank you. So are, are you asking for this to be expedited then? Or just follow the regular sketch? So we would vote on this? Because it's not marked expedited here.
Okay. But if we're getting the M O U and are we, okay, didn't you say we were to vote on that tomorrow? Maybe I misunderstood.
I, that, my expectation is the, my understanding is the Personnel Director and the Union Rep are meeting tomorrow to sign an M O U. I can provide a draft of that in advance. To move this forward. You know, the other thing, and I'm just going to throw this out. You know, we do this occasionally and never more than really for two weeks. If we voted on it at the March meeting, we could make it effective as of, you know, whenever the beginning of the next pay period is. I see Chuck has joined us, which I think is like this Saturday starts the next pay period.
Correct.
So we could make it effective as of then, under, under any circumstances.
So that would be even if, let's say, this piece of legislation was, followed the regular schedule, we voted on it at the March meeting, and then could retroactively make it effective as of this coming Saturday? Am I understanding that correctly?
If, if we made it effective as of that, because you'd be doing it in the middle of a pay period. So we could make it effective as, as of the beginning of that pay period.
I see. Okay, I'm just trying to understand the timeline.
Be losing any money, and as long as city council said that they were signing it out, I think you'd be fairly certain that he's, he's going to get that. Would that be acceptable?
Um, right, I'm just, I'm trying to understand the timeline just because this is not marked as expedited in the packet. So we are proposing that this should be expedited to be voted on tomorrow?
What, what, what I'm suggesting is if people are uncomfortable voting on it tomorrow because you're not going to get to sign M O U until tomorrow, that as an alternative, we could vote on it at the March 3rd, I believe, meeting with the understanding that it would be applicable as of the beginning of the pay period, beginning on February 20th.
I see. Okay, so this doesn't.
The other option would be because of what Patrick and Paul have been saying is that to put it on tomorrow's agenda so that it could be effective as of the 20th.
I see. Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay.
Madam President, can I ask, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, I don't know who said that, but.
I think it's Phil. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Phil. Is that you?
Yeah, so I, I guess my question is, I, I, you know, I, I, I agree with both. I, I, I understand what Councilwoman Scanlon's saying, and I'm not opposed to accepting this and voting on. My question is, this situation became apparent that fast that this person's looking for another job? And this wasn't something that happened a few weeks ago. I, I think that's the issue when we look at expediting things or whatever. I'm not opposed to making the decision because I think, I understand you've explained it well, and we want to keep good employees, so that's not an issue. But my question is, is this person's ready to bail that fast that it was that imminent? I guess that's my question.
Well, I don't know, is he would jump tomorrow, but I mean, it's just the timeline that we have here and, you know, throw in, you know, holiday and things like that, it just, through the process, just didn't move along as quick as we could and things kind of came together today. So. I mean, I, last week.
What was that?
Okay, I mean, that's fine. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot. I think we just had this, we've had this broader conversation, I think, and, and I think it's, we're just a little sensitive to be having time to look at things and, and make sure that, that, that everything is proper. And I think you guys can understand that too. Like I said, I'm not opposed to this, but I think, you know, I think we're seeing a lot of things come through that are all of a sudden, it's just a flat-out emergency, and I'm not sure that all these things are or should have been. So I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot.
Okay.
And, and Councilman, just so you know, the Parks Department had asked this question. The Parks Department had asked this question. It took Personnel and Court Counsel a few days to figure out exactly how to do it.
Okay.
To make sure we were.
Okay, like I said, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot. I just, I just wanted to share my, you know, the broader thought. And like I said, I agree with Councilman Scanlon. I am absolutely not opposed. We want to keep good employees. I totally, totally am in support of that. I just wanted to, to ask that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, um, thank you for all that. I, we can go ahead and move this forward. I, I do appreciate the explanation. It's just that sometimes it does become, as you know, very challenging for getting things like that. And then especially in this particular case, we're expecting something additional tomorrow, which gives us very little time. So I would appreciate, you know, the sooner we can get it, so we can see it, the better. Thank you.
All right, no problem. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yep, and if there are no other questions, we're going to move along and that takes us to Megan, RL 21-34, I think, right?
Madam President? Megan Brockett is at the police meeting tonight.
Oh, yeah, okay.
He asked me if I could cover for her, since I'm going to be here until the end of the meeting in any event.
Okay.
And move Charlie and Chuck ahead, and then I can do it towards the end.
Okay.
All righty, hello, everyone.
So that is, yes, it's RL 21-39. Right?
Hello? The board has asked me to come and in response to notice that Johnson City is going to have increased local systems costs. I am looking to have our 2020 budget increased by $307,967.03.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam President. Hi, Charlie, how are you?
I do, good.
Good. Um, so I was wondering if you could just, I guess in general, tell us a little bit more about why this increase is happening. I know you said it was because of Johnson City, but could you provide just a little bit more details on what caused this? This increase?
During the budget process, both the city and the village give us estimates of what their sewer charges are going to be. And I believe it's the administration operates and maintenance for the trunk lines. Where like for Johnson City, it's the Town of Union Vestal, and I believe part of Port Dickinson or Town of Dickinson goes through their lines. So this is a way for them to pass the costs of maintaining the large trunk lines that are used by outline areas and Johnson City. So September, a year and a half ago, when we were going through the budgets, they gave us an estimated number. And when they get their actuals in for the year, my understanding is they had a large increase in salaries, benefits, and health insurance. So that was passed through us. I don't have specific as to what those increases were caused by. I did ask, but I have the copy. There should be a worksheet attached behind that RL that shows their breakdown. That's as much information as I have, I'm afraid.
Okay, um, well, thank you for that. I don't see in my packet a budget breakdown that's attached. Did, did other council members receive that?
I don't believe.
No, it's not, it's not in our packet, I believe. I think you're right, Councilwoman Friedman.
Well, I can resend that. It did go down to the clerks with the RL.
Okay, yeah, that, that would be helpful. Thank you. And so my, my follow-up question is that Personnel Services is a large line. And I was wondering if you had information about which position specifically would be affected by transferring the $307,000 from the Personnel Services line?
We have eight unfilled positions in 2020. So that was money that was never filled because we couldn't get the people in. So that was unspent salaries that were budgeted for. We had expected to have them, but it did not occur.
I see. Okay, thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Going to RL 21-40.
And these are expense lines from our 2020 budget again that were overspent. So I'm asking for $544.72 increase to lab supplies. The water, which is, we buy our water from the city, is $3,903.52. And equipment and pump repairs, electrical. I'd had an increase in that, but it turned out I didn't have enough. I tried to gather through what items are coming through towards the end of the year, and I did miss one. It's $1,489.63 with all of the necessary funds for the three of those, which comes to $5,937.87 coming from contingency.
Any questions?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman again.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Is this coming from the contingency line of the 2020 budget or the 2021 budget?
2020.
Okay, so the, the contingency line in the 2020 budget was money that, there was money that wasn't spent in 2020. there was money that wasn't spent in 2020, so it's kind of, I get, as I'm saying this out loud, I'm realizing that I'm confused about logistically how it would work to, to retroactively take money out of the contingency line from 2020.
These are all 2020 expenses. So this is tying up the year. We had some late invoices come through. So the contingencies line, we typically have $200,000 to $250,000. We budget for small and the unanticipated or overrun bills. We do try and run a tight budget and sometimes we make it too tight. And that's why contingency helps us out in these situations.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And in both of these RLs, because they are 2020, and I'm sure Chuck would agree that these should be expedited so the year end can be tied out.
I agree, Charlie, but I'm not going to take the,
It doesn't matter.
I'll ask it.
Charlie, it's not worth it. I'll just say that if we don't file things on time because of all the issues with people filing stuff late, uh, maybe we just stop funding some of these things. I'm not talking to you. I'm just talking in general.
The question is, um, thank you, Charlie. The question is, uh, there's nothing wrong with expediting, right? I mean, we've been doing.
In this case, we can wait.
So, so the question is right. Can we wait? Should we, you know, expedite when needed and let's not expedite?
We can wait.
Then we'll wait. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for Mr. Hearsaw? Okay, thank you so much. We are moving on to.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Uh, 2135, I think is the.
Uh, 21 dash 35, yes.
Okay. This one is the resolution that caused so many headaches at the last one that uh, just to update everybody on what actually did happen is uh, there was two account numbers that were incorrect. I found out uh, that morning. Um, I sent one up to Ken and he sent that out to you probably like at 10 o'clock last meetings, the Wednesday morning. Uh, I found the correct number here after doing some research for this RL. I sent it up to Ken roughly around noon. Uh, I had not known that he was gone on vacation, so at 5:30, I didn't see him sending this out. So I sent it out to everyone thinking it would be a simple change. Well, that wasn't the case. So now we have to go through and redo the uh, amend the permanent resolution 2104, uh, changing the original line, which was H1440.525324 flood wall inspections to the correct line, which is H812052505520619, replace the sewer line. Uh, we're basically spending $210,000 uh, to fix a sewer line related to Barton Le Judas inspections uh, that they did on that other line.
And if I can jump in for one second, uh, this is now a, an actual ordinance to amend the prior ordinance. We can no longer do it by motion and reconsideration because that can only occur in the same meeting or at the next succeeding meeting. So now it's new legislation.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. So I know that we had this discussion last meeting, but just to reiterate, this is simply renaming a budget line, correct?
No, it's a, it's a different budget line. The one, the first line that was on there was for the engineering work. The, being $210,000, it needs to be on the construction or replacement of the sewer line.
I see. So it's no, there's no change in the amount of money. It's just the money is being transferred to a new budget line that we are creating.
That's already been created. That's out there.
Okay, so we're just transferring the money from one budget line to another one.
We're using a different line to do this project.
It, it's correcting the budget line.
Okay. I get, maybe I'm getting, like, getting lost in the weeds here, but I.
You are. We had budget line, Aviva, we had budget line number one. That's what came down to you. That was incorrect line. It should be budget line 10. That's what we're doing. We're bringing it to budget line 10.
Right.
It's correct.
Okay. Thank you. I also just wanted to say thank you for understanding our, as, as council members, our hesitation to um, vote on legislation that we're not actually looking at. So I understand, you know, things, things happen, things get lost, you know, we, it, sometimes things have to be rushed through. So I just want to say thank you for, for understanding uh, us, you know, setting a precedent for voting on things that, that we don't actually see in front of us.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move on to RL 21 dash 36.
This uh, RL is to transfer money from a vacant payroll assistant position in my department to a temporary service line uh, position in my department. Uh, I had a bunch of uh, promotions within my department earlier this year. Uh, it took me until today to find someone to fill the last position. Uh, I need a couple of weeks to get that individual trained. Uh, so I brought in a temporary person since January uh, through now. I want to extend that.
Stop.
I'm sorry. Sorry. I wanted to say. Sorry about that. I had a live mic and the dog is over here. Sorry.
So this is just.
Angel, were you talking to me?
No, Tom, not this time. Sorry. I apologize for that. I didn't know my mic was live.
I apologize, Chuck. Go ahead.
It's all right. So this is just to fund this position through the end of February.
Any questions? Okay, let's move on to the next. Go ahead.
This is Councilwoman Riley. So, so the, just for my clarification, so similar to what Paul Parker is doing or requested in his RL, and maybe we could talk about this separate from Chuck, but essentially he's moving money from one line to the other to support an employee. The other one just impacted a union agreement as well. Is that correct? Is that the only difference between these two transitions in terms of budgetary transitions related to positions?
No, what, what Paul was trying to do is give somebody a raise. Okay? I'm not doing that. What I had is, I had a vacant position and actually one unfunded, one vacant position uh, with two people being promoted that needed to be trained. So I tried to do this systematically uh, so that I didn't have three people all trying to learn a new job and me trying to teach all three of them or having other people do it. So I brought in a temporary person who worked here previously that could help us out. Uh, I finally was able to hire the other, the last position that needed to be filled today. And I'm requesting that we keep this temporary person on through the end of February to assist in this whole transition is what I'm doing here. Come the end of February, this person will be gone.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you.
So now we'll move on to the last one, which is RL 21 dash 37.
21 dash 37, uh, I'm doing this for Chief Zakuski, who's also on that other meeting here. He has a administrative assistant uh, position, person who is retiring uh, and that person has a payout. And what I'm requesting to do here is transfer money from a vacant uh, police officer position to the administrative assistant position to pay for this individual's payout so that we can backfill that position immediately, which is an important position in the Police Department. And the amount of that is $4,940.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question, please.
Uh, yeah, go ahead, uh, Councilwoman.
Chuck, forgive me, but how does, how does this payout occur? How, why is this a payout?
When people retire, uh, they get paid, depending on their union, a certain amount of sick time, which is usually two thirds of their sick time. So some up to 100 hours or 100 days. So someone that has worked here for 30 years and they had 200 uh, days of sick time available to them, they would get paid out two thirds of 150 or 100 days when they leave. They also would get paid out their vacation time and PL time that they had upon retiring. Ken, you want to add anything to that?
No, that's, that's, it's unused sick time up to two thirds of 150 and any earned vacation and personal leave time.
Does that answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
I don't know who was that, was that uh, Councilman Scanlon or, oh, okay. I, I think I said. Okay. Um, thank you. Any other questions? So, did we listen to this one? Uh, we still have RL 21 dash third, well, we're going to go with RL 21 dash 33, Lee.
All right. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
So we have some better news in the clerk's office. Our senior licensing clerk, she retired. Her last day was Friday. We were able to fill her position with an internal applicant, another employee that works here at City Hall. And uh, according to their union contract, any transfer like that uh, requires uh, a little bit of a raise. So we do need to move some money around. It's only $109 uh, to make this new employee whole.
The reason this has to go to council is because the position that was in the budget is $109 more now than the current position there.
Any questions?
Um, yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Friedman.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, is this pay increase just for this one employee because it's an internal transfer? Or is this going to be the salary rate moving forward as well?
In the CSEA contract, uh, you can hire people up to a range. So for example, if this was not an internal hire, we could still use the same amount that was budgeted previously. But under the CSEA contract, when somebody moves from one position to another, I think Chuck or Lee, remind me, it's, it's like you get a 7% increase.
It's a minimum of 7% increase.
So that, that's where the $109 comes from. But no, it doesn't mean that if this person were to leave and we hired somebody from the outside, uh, we would still have the option to hire somebody within the range set forth in the CSEA contract.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So now, thank you, Chuck. Um, we're moving on.
Go back to 40 Medford?
Yes, we do. RL 21 dash 34.
Okay, Megan Brockett couldn't be here this evening. Uh, 40 Medford is one of our side lot programs. Uh, it's one of the places where, you know, we own a lot. We offer it to the neighbors. This is an adjacent property owner. Uh, they offered $850. What's slightly unusual about this one is most of the side lot programs are specifically for green space. In his application, he did request uh, permission to have the option at some time to build a shed on this property for up to 10 feet by 10 feet. And that was approved by E and A, but that would be subject to the planning department's approval to make sure it's located properly, et cetera. But other than that, this is a regular side lot program uh, transfer.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. So now we are moving on to uh, appointments section. We have uh, someone here for the planning committee. We have the, I believe everybody received the resume for Kelly Weiss. I don't know if anybody has any questions. It's uh, on her resume. Not that I would be able to answer those questions. Anyone has any comments? Okay. We will move on. So we are coming to a discussion piece and this will be quick. Um, this is regarding our meetings moving forward. Um, so I have um, had a conversation with Lori. Well, let me just back up a little bit. We've had some technological issues as far as I'm concerned regarding, not issues, but um, barriers uh, with what we're using right now to meet uh, this uh, go-to webinar, whatever it's called. I um, you know, we can only be, there can only be, I think, six people at once on at the same time on, on the screen. And I know that for some of you, this is not compatible with the equipment that you have at home, whether it's your phone or your laptop or Chromebook or whatever. So I'm very excited to hear from Lori that we're actually moving to Zoom, which I think most of us are more comfortable with or familiar with and certainly seems to be more compatible with, with, like I said, laptops, phones, whatever folks are using to, to uh, log in. Um, so if I remember correctly, um, we should be switching to Zoom um, by the second meeting in March. So I'm excited about that potentially earlier and that's just, what, two meetings away. Um, personally, I, I'm someone who, you probably noticed, I have, I've always been using the camera. I think it's just one way for us to maybe feel connected. There's such a disconnect for us um, for so many reasons. And certainly, you know, COVID and, and the way that we have to do things nowadays hasn't helped with that at all. Um, I think there is, um, you know, a lot of newness. You know, we're all new with what we're doing here. We're learning and I think not being able to see each other adds to maybe confusion and, and um, just a lack of sense of being together. But that's me. That's just, just me. Um, I, I'm always on camera because I also feel like, you know, we need, I, I want to be with what we have to work with as present as possible to our constituents. I do hope that um, you're all more able to join via Zoom. Obviously, it's not a mandate. You know, you can do whatever you, you can or want. Um, I love to be able to, to see my colleagues and it also helps with the whole, like, talking over people. You know, if we're all on one screen and somebody wants to talk, we can raise our hand. Just makes it a little easier. So I'm excited about that. I, I'm hoping that um, I don't know, we'll feel a little more collegial and just working together. Again, that's, that's my preference. But Lori has been amazing working on, on getting this to, to happen to, and, and she's moving forward with that. And additionally, um, we are anticipating going back to the chambers uh, beginning, by beginning of April, hopefully before that. This is obviously in a way that doesn't break any rules, you know, with six feet apart and wearing our masks and so forth. But I think it'll be kind of nice to be able to, if folks choose to come down, to have that space where we can work together. We can look at each other. We can ask questions. We might have our masks on, but we can still look at each other in the eyes and, and you know, uh, answer any questions that we might have, maybe avoid some confusion, maybe, I don't know. I just feel like it would be better. Um, but again, that we had all these things to, to, to work out uh, as far as technology in the chambers and I'm certainly not technological at all. So I want to say a big, big thank you to Lori for that. And I, I don't know if anyone has uh, any questions or anything that they'd like to discuss, but that was really my uh, my piece regarding this. I just wanted to give you all a um, an update as to, you know, how we're moving forward. And eventually, and I can't wait when we're all able to open up force chambers to the public, but that will be a little bit down the road. Any comments, questions regarding that?
Yeah, this is, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Hi, yes, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, so first I want to say this is an exciting announcement. Thank you so much to the IT department and to the city clerk for archiving the meetings onto YouTube. I know this has been a huge learning curve for everyone. I also wanted to add that I have heard from uh, multiple constituents that it's difficult to participate in the meetings via go-to webinar and they have had an easier time participating in other meetings that were held over Zoom. So in addition to it being easier for us and, and my Chromebook is compatible with Zoom, so I'll be able to be on camera. Um, but also I'm looking. Um, but also I'm looking forward to making it easier for constituents to be able to participate in the meetings as well. So overall, I think this is a great announcement and exciting news.
Yeah, I agree with you about the Zoom. I've, I certainly have used both, and I, I'd like Zoom a lot better. But, um, I, um, yes to everything that you said, and yes to making it easier for constituents as well. Um, but I also want to say, and again, this is not a mandate, it's just, you know, my own personal preference. You know, for those of us that actually can be on camera, so we can see each other, because it's all we have right now, I would absolutely appreciate it. Um, but, but again, it's, you know, everybody's preference, so. Okay, anything else? No other, oh, we do have pending legislation.
Yes. So we just have two items here, uh, RL 21-28, that's amending the 2021 capital fund for the energy payment rebate at the, uh, for the bumper placement. And then RL 21-30, uh, an agreement with Groom County to extend operations for meal service at the first ward senior senate.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. And unless there's anything else, without us, for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, we're adjourned, have a good night.
Good night.
Night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.